Let's call this meeting to order, Warminster Board of Supervisors, Thursday, February 3rd. Mark would like to lead us and pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our U.S. citizens and others serving abroad. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, welcome.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I was going to do the announcements.
Prior to the, prior to this meeting, we had executive session in which we discussed personnel issues, labor issues, contract issues, and grievances. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. As far as announcements, the only thing that I'd like to say tonight is I want to thank the Public Works people. They did a great job plowing our streets. And I also want to thank the, our police department for notifying everyone that they need to move their cars when there's a declaration, emergency declaration, or they put cards out, and if the practice continues, we have discussed this, if the practice continues, where people ignore that, it's in our ordinance, you'll be towed and fined. So I would recommend when there's a snow emergency or there's an emergency declaration that you move your cars off the street so our Public Works people can do their job. Thank you. Kathy, I'll turn it over to you.
No announcements tonight, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and kudos to the Public Works guys as well. And I agree with you about, about people getting off the roads, and I think our tow haulers will be more than glad to tow cars, so let's, let's not let that happen.
Right.
I have a few rec announcements. At a wine and cheese designer, Bag Bingo, due to the COVID numbers, we are postponing wine and cheese designer Bingo until Friday, April the 1st. All currently purchased tickets and sponsorships will be honored. We are still in need of sponsors and players for this event. You can register online at warminsterTownship.org/specialevents. Sponsors are also needed for upcoming community events. We are looking for sponsors for Designer Bag Bingo, Spring Slush Road Rally, we talked about at the last park board meeting. I want to go to that because it sounds really fascinating. We'll have to, we'll have to get a report on that before the event or after the event. The Memorial Day Celebration Parade, and especially Warminster Day, which our friends from Cowie Shop, right, have stepped up for Warminster Day once again. In fact, Parks and Recreation are excited to announce our latest sponsors. First National Bank and Trust of Newtown will be sponsoring the annual Easter egg scramble, and we're going to have that in the spring, right, not when it's 90 degrees out this year. Pat, we were out there, it was blazing.
Yes, we were all sweating.
Victory Bank will be sponsoring a rubber ducky regatta. That's another new one.
Oh.
And as I'd said, the Cowie Family Shop, right, who always steps up for us, will be sponsoring Warminster Day. Please come join these businesses and help make our event successful as possible. COVID test kits, this is another important one. The Bucks County Department of Health will distribute free COVID-19 rapid test kits at Warminster Community Park on Monday, February the 7th, which is next Monday, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I think that was a reschedule.
It was.
From today.
From today, right.
Right. Persons must enter the park at Veterans Way and follow the traffic loop for drive-through service. Cars should be prepared to wait in lengthy lines. For each car will receive four test kits. In the event of inclement weather, the site may be closed or delayed. Check the county website for cancellation info, buckscounty.gov. And I want to give a shout out to the police and our emergency management team that really made that happen really, really effectively the last two times, so.
Yeah, they did a great job. We had that big rush at, I guess, like 9:30 to 11:00.
Yeah.
Ties things up, people get, you know, but they did a great job moving along.
Moving people through, so hopefully, hopefully Monday will go just as well. Check out the township website for upcoming programs, events, and summer camps at warminsterTownship.org/specialevents. The township newsletter in your mailbox at the end of February should, should be out, so that's good news. Dog licenses in Bark Park, 2022 annual dog licenses are for sale at Park and Rec Office between 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. P.A. law requires that all dogs over the age of three must be licensed and have rabies vaccinations. And Bark Park memberships for 2022 are available. Parks in the winter, during the winter conditions, parks may be used for the public at your own risk. Park trails, parking lots, and access points are cleared only, or only after all roads, bus stops, and municipal facilities have been addressed. I have that, and I wanted to mention, and I know it's a little early, but there's a, it's coming up in April again, that they're going to do, the Warminster Historical Society's going to do another sip and shop over at the golf course.
Oh.
They did it at Christmas time, was really terrific. I'll have more info on it at the next couple of meetings, but keep that one on your.
That was a nice one.
Keep that on the radar. That was a really, really nice event. They had terrific vendors, and it was run by the Warminster Historical Society. That's, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great, thanks, Mark. Judy.
No announcements except to remind people that the new Weiss Market's open on York Road. They had a beautiful job. It's a lovely store. Go there. I think they sent everybody in Warminster coupons, so go see them at least one time. Use your coupons. And anything else, there's hardly anything else to announce after Mark went through his list, so that's all I really have today. Thank you.
Let my staff prepare that. All right, Janice?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. All right. So now we'll go to presentations. So I'm happy to see there's a gentleman in the audience that, that's been here several times, and every time he comes in here, there's usually, it's like after a category five hurricane. And he comes in, and he, and he takes all the heat, and he does a fantastic job. He's been instrumental in helping our township stay afloat financially, and also just keep all the pieces and the machinery running. So I'd like to present to Mr. Steve Wiener, the key to Warminster Township.
Woo! Nobody more deserving.
Someone taking a picture?
So Steve, come on up, please. This is well deserved. I know when Bill took ill, you were more than happy to come in here. You were already here doing some financial stuff for us, and you were more than happy to come in and be acting manager, and what a fantastic job you did. We can't say enough. And so, you know, congratulations, and anytime you want to come back. I'll be brief. I am deeply honored.
Oh, my pleasure.
And greatly appreciative of this. I've never gotten a key to any municipality, and it really means a lot. It is a big deal to me, and I will cherish it forever. And I have been looking for something to put on my wall behind, when I'm on all these Zoom meetings. I'm lacking that. I think someone here had mentioned that to me the other day. This will go there.
All right.
And I thank you, and I thank everyone, and they're trusting me.
Thanks. Should we take a moment to get a couple pictures?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you once again, and Steve, as I said, well deserved. Okay. I don't believe there's any land use matters, public hearings, no?
No.
So we'll go right to public comment. Come on up.
Hi, Path Oil, 6310 Centennial Station. As you might know, I'm the Secretary of the William Tenet Alumni Association, and right now what we're doing is we're buying benches for the inside areas, the, how do you call it? The outside area that's inside the building.
Courtyards.
Courtyards, that's it, the courtyards. There's two courtyards, one in the 910 building, one in the 1112 building, and there's nothing in them. So we're buying these, we're raising money to buy the benches, and they're, it looks like a park bench. However, the students can go in there and take the back of the bench and pull it down forward, and it becomes a desk.
Oh, nice.
And if they put two of them together, it becomes like a picnic table, so it's, it's great for the kids that they can go outside, clear their head, and do some studying, or do some writing, or whatever. The benches are $300, and we're getting groups of people together to dedicate the benches. The class of '75 donated one. Some people donated one in the memory of Mr. Kennedy, Robert Kennedy, he was Mr. Kennedy when I went there. You don't change the names. But so anyhow, if anybody's interested, look on our website, wthsalumni.com, and there's a lot of information about it there, and support the Panthers. Thank you.
Excellent, great. Thanks, Pat.
Sounds real nice. They don't fold down so they can take naps, though, right?
No.
Okay, good. Strictly for study and studious activities.
Or clear your head.
Yeah, clear your head.
Jamie, she.
All right, anyone else, anyone else for public comment? Come on up, sir.
Good evening. My name's Art Crisco. I'm a resident of Warminster, Pennsylvania, have been for many years.
Art, can you give us your address, please?
731 Don't Laugh Buttercup Drive, Warminster, Pennsylvania. I just learned a new word, thank you very much for that, impervious. What in the world, how are we coming up with a fee that probably should be called a tax, but you're putting added cost to impervious property without which you wouldn't have any property tax, or you would have a much reduced property tax? And I just left a school meeting a couple of weeks ago, and a school teacher or the head of the school announced that fifth graders were reading, or were, they were averaging below 81% of the school students, I'm sorry, I said it wrong, 81% of the fifth graders are below grade level, and we're just going along with this. And lastly, but leastly, I heard one person when somebody said that their mask fell off or something like that, and he said, "That's all right, because we're vaccinated." None of that makes sense. The masks should go. I don't know why you guys are wearing masks still. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right. Let's go to the consent agenda. Consider approval of the Board of Supervisors minutes dated January 20, 2022. Consider 350 Ivyland Road, release number one from the escrow account in the amount of $1,929,055.72. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, Judy. Any questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. All right, who are we going to here? I believe we're going to you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the supplemental bill list dated January 31, 2022, in the amount of $5,579.57. It's a little bit lower than usual because we just approved bills two weeks ago.
Right, okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
I made the motion, I just need a second.
Oh, second?
Second.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board, from the public? Seeing none, call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. All right, John, you're up.
Three minutes starting now?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to talk about the numbers from the general fund, as usual. The one thing I'm going to do a little bit differently is this is their first time looking at year-end numbers. I back, this includes everything, so there's no backing out of MMOs or one-time sale of assets, so, but the one thing it doesn't, it doesn't have year-end adjustments, and these are definitely not audited numbers, so there will be some changes, but this will give you an idea of what we're looking at. Overall, right now, revenues are looking like they went up $6.7 million. Right off the top, there was a sale of the storm sewer system, that was $6 million of that. The second one is the transfer tax. Again, that's looking like it's going to be up about $475,000. It's almost doubling the budget of $750,000, so the transfer tax has been incredible this year. The last thing I'm going to talk about is the earned income tax. That's up about $315,000, or about 7%. Last week, we had a countywide tax collection committee meeting, so I can give you some idea of how we did compared to the county. Overall, the county is up 11.5% or $24 million. The total collected is $234 million, so that's all Bucks County. There wasn't a single community that had a decrease in EIT that actually collects it. And then comparing us to the Centennial School District, the school district was actually up 8.7%, so they did a little bit better, but that does reach out a little bit beyond Warminster into Upper South. So to give an idea, like, we are following the trends of the county and the actual general area, so overall, revenue, we're looking, it looks great. Expenses, expenses were up $3.6 million. The big ones, and these should not be any surprise because we've talked about all of these, the non-uniform MMO was up $327, the police MMO, $696,000. Now, the, the next three are things that are really good because they're planning for the future. We transferred an extra $1.5 million into debt service. That's to cover the debt that was borrowed this year so that we don't have to raise taxes to cover the current debt. We transferred an additional $1 point, or $2.2 million into capital. At the December meeting, we did a budget amendment to transfer $2.4 that wasn't originally budgeted for, so again, this is planning for the future. And the one thing that actually isn't an expense yet, because it hasn't happened, is we did commit $1.5 million to the OPEC fund that I know Steve's going to talk about later. So these are three very important things that are really great for the future, they're going to help us plan and actually get things rolling in the right direction. I, I think this year, this is the first year the general fund's going to have an increase in fund balance since 2016.
Yes.
Always good news.
So it's kind of like, I like to say, we stopped the bleeding, and now we're looking to the future to actually plan for the future, which is great. And the one advantage to, to this, overall, we're looking at an increase in fund balance of about $3 million. We didn't have to take a tan this year. We did in 2020 and 2021. Right now, we have the fund balance to cover these months until the tax revenue starts coming in. Again, all great news right now. I don't know how long we can keep up this without planning and actually looking in the future, but as of the end of December 2021, we're looking good.
Excellent, thanks, John. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And quite honestly, I have to say, it's about time that we started planning for the future rather than living for the moment.
Yes.
Especially with the finances, and I know this board's committed to that, future planning and keeping us financially on solid ground, so thank you, you're doing a great job.
Good job, John, thank you.
Great report.
Thank you.
Got it.
Impressive, this guy.
In three minutes.
He's on it.
All right. No unfinished business, let's go to new business. I think Karen's here, Karen Whitney, Parks Director, talk about some project at the Warner Park. Come on up, Karen.
Very excited.
Very excited.
Very excited. Good evening. I'm Karen Whitney, Parks Recreation Director for Warminster Township. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm going to be here to present a quick proposal about the Warner Park LED project. Warminster Parks and Rec has been working on upgrading all of the lighting in our parks since 2017. 2017, we did Warner, we did, excuse me, Field A at Monroe. 2018, we did Field B at Monroe. 2019, we started working on the project at Warner, and there were a bunch of changes municipally-wise. Co-stars changed a little bit, we had some changes in management, and the project got shelved for a little while, which was actually a pretty good thing, because then we had a hurricane and, or a tornado, and some of our poles came down, or if they didn't come down, they were weakened. And so Larry Derrick Opian, who is our facilities director, and I have been working on this project for quite a few years, and I have to really give Larry some credit because he's been really instrumental in moving this project forward. So where we are, we have the, the LED project. John, can you go to the next slide? I gave you a little bit of the project background so that you have some idea where we're coming from. Co-stars contractors, instead of putting this project out to bid, we are trying to use Co-stars contractors, CoStar vendors, which have already met all of the state requirements, the state bid requirements, and so if we can use them, then we do not have to go out to bid, even though some of the projects may be over the bid threshold. This project right here, when we went out for bid in 2018, came in at $71,400. We thought that was a great price, and we were very excited, but we saw with the changes in, in supply chains and, and pricing going way up, we knew that we would have to increase it, so for this, and with the pole issue, we knew we would have to increase it. So the budget for this year, for this project, was $90,000. So the benefits, if you don't know a lot about LED, some of the great things about LED is that you're using less wattage, you're getting better light, it equals reduced cost, they aren't as, you have, you don't have to maintain them as much as metal hall lights, which is what we have in the parks right now. LEDs provide brighter and safer light on all of our fields, and Warminster Soccer's loving the LEDs on Fields A and Field B, they're really, that's really made a difference. At Warner, we're going to do the field lights, the practice lights, and the parking lot lights to try and make sure that the whole park is, is lighter and brighter. The other piece of this project, one of the options was that we wanted to make sure that we moved the lighting controls to the outside of a building, like we have up at Monroe, so that we don't have volunteers and people going into the electric room and playing with the breaker box. So all of the controls will be moved to the outside.
That's really good news, Karen.
It is good, it is good. We're, yeah, we're, we're all pleased about that.
I was going to say, when I coached, my husband and I coached, he'd always turn lights out, and be, there's no light on those fields and halls, so that's great for Warner Park.
Right, and, and what will happen is, we are looking at some, some lights that will also stay on as people are leaving, because that's another issue.
That's great.
Also, new poles will reduce risk of poles falling over. As you can see, we lost a pole. This was, I think, during Idaho when we had that tornado come through. If you weren't aware, it actually came through Warminster Community Park, cut through Ivy Woods, cut through over to Vista Drive, through Monroe. We had a lot of trees come down, lots of damage over on Vista Drive. We, we, we were, Larry and I got very nervous about, we have poles that have been up since 1977, all of our park field poles are wooden poles, so we wanted to make sure that we didn't have more poles to replace, so, after we saw this one. So we, we reached out to a lot of different companies, we had PICO assist us, we actually had a company that offered to come and do our pole check for free. They came out into the, all the parks, they checked all of our poles. We found that we had seven poles that need to be replaced. Four of them were at Warner Park. So when the RFP went out again, the RFP, we included the four pole replacement, and we'll be doing the other pole replacement as well in the other parks, but right now we wanted to make sure that we got all these four as we did this project. Go ahead, John. So here, I know it's hard to see, but this is the, kind of the project overview. It lays out all the different poles, their heights, what kind of lights we're going to be replacing, where they're going to be replaced, how they're going to be replaced, and that's, it's pretty hard to see, but it gives you an idea. Next, next slide, please. This breaks down all the different options that we put into the project. Option one is for the football field. The football field is the main field that is used by the pioneers. There are going to be 27 fixtures, two 55 poles that need to be replaced, all the brackets, materials, and all related parts and installation. Also, because this project is over $25,000, all of the pricing included prevailing wage. Option two is just the practice field, which is the little practice field off to the side. This is five fixtures, one 35-foot pole needs to be replaced with the cross-arm bracket, and then all parts and installation. Option three was the parking lot lighting, which is four fixtures, one pole, which is the pole that you saw down, one 35-foot pole, cross-arm brackets, all that. Option four is the lighting controls. This is bringing the lighting controls from the interior to the exterior so that volunteers are not in the electric room. And option five was working with PICO to tap into the parking lot out at, out that's closest to Kirk Road, so that we have a light fixture out there as well. The total cost came in at $81,700, which is below our $90,000 budget limit that we were setting. We're very pleased with the price. We have received the CoStars' information from this vendor, which includes both the parts and the installation as part of their CoStars' bid. It went through, the township solicitor took a look at it and approved it as well, so I think we're all good to go. We would like to move this project, move this project forward as quickly as we can because April, April is right around the corner, and this park is also used in the offseason, off-football season, it is used for baseball and softball. So it's the same lighting project, we just want to make sure that it gets covered as quickly as we can, so that's what I'm here tonight to ask for approval going forward. Does anybody have any questions or things you want to know?
No, I know it's, I've been over there a few times with the Athletic Association, and it's definitely something that desperately needs to be done.
Yeah, one of the things I forgot, John, if you want to do one more slide, Warminster Pioneers has been working really, really hard to keep that place looking great, and just last year, they had a donation to get their new scoreboard, so this kind of adds on to that project. They've been really gung-ho about, you know, making that park look as great as it does, and they have a lot of kids who use it, so during, during football season, it's really important that we have good lighting on the fields.
And the, if I could, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, the board, Trail Electric is the insulation contractor that had the best number through the CoStars' system, and they have given Karen and Larry and us the relevant information we need that, as Karen indicated, we did send to Randy's office to make sure that we were allowed to proceed with that through the CoStars' system, and they, they told us yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the other thing about Trail Electric is they have done a lot of work in the parks, they've been helping us with the Field A problems. I mean, they just have been really great about working in the parks, and I think that's one of the reasons, since they know our lighting, they know the wiring, they know where all the lines are run, they don't have to go out and do all that stuff, and I think that was really instrumental in getting a really good price from them.
Okay.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
On the parking lot lights?
Mm-hmm.
Are they just going to face the parking lot, or is it going to be a double arm so that goes over that other field as well?
We're going to have that, I guess what it's called, the cheerleading field will also be lit, yes.
Thank you.
That little piece will be lit, the, the practice field will be lit, and the main field will be lit.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm impressed. This is exciting news.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we're talking about planning for the future, you know, we have an infrastructure committee, I know we're going to touch on that later, that projects like this can be worked for that.
Right.
That, that money, we were blessed with, the infrastructure money, so.
Yeah.
Yes, good job, thank you so much.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
Well done, as usual.
Thank you.
So is there a, a motion in order here?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the park project to, for Warner Park.
I'd like to second that.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. Nice presentation.
You're welcome.
Looking forward to seeing it completed.
Me too.
Looking forward to using the fields.
Me too.
So I do have one question. They still play softball there?
Yes. Softball is the spring sport that's played there. Even though Pioneers has a youth flag football program, they moved the flag football program to Shymonic Park, which will actually be the next park in the round of doing the LEDs. That's scheduled for next year.
Excellent. Excellent. All right. Any other questions from the public? Let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. The man with the key to the township, Mr. Weisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board. I'll be brief. We had a, I attended the Pension Advisory Board meeting for the first quarter of this year. And I'm going to give just a brief update as to one of the items that we talked about, which was the OPEB trust that John had mentioned earlier about the $1.5 million that the board has reserved for creating this trust. Obviously, creating a trust takes a number of steps. And we have to do a couple of items, including creation of an ordinance, creation of a trust agreement with the bank, and finally, we have to update the investment policy statement that the township has. So I'm working on all three of those documents. And the plan is to make a presentation at the April Pension Investment Advisory Board, and then come back to the board in May. So I wanted to give you an update as to the status.
Let's, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, let's refresh the public's.
Right. Good idea.
On what OPEB actually is.
What OPEB actually is.
OPEB is other post-retirement benefits is what OPEB stands for. So when we have post-retirement benefits, it would be for things most, the big item here is health insurance for retirees. And this is primarily of the police department. It's a benefit that the police department has. It's a common benefit. But ours is significantly unfunded. And it's unfunded by about $20 million. And that unfunded balance goes up because we don't have anything in the bank to earn an investment return to offset it. So when our pension investment assets make a return, we're allowed by the township code to make investments in the financial markets. We can buy bonds, we can buy stocks. And we have a greater opportunity in those markets to decrease, to increase the number of the amount of the assets, thus decreasing the liability that we have. Since we do not have any assets for the OPEB trust, this will create it, we'll fund it, we'll seed it with 1.5 million. And our actuary then will be able to take the balance that we have in there and project out a future return. And it's that point right there that helps decrease the unfunded liability that is on your financial statements. So you'll get a bigger bang out of the 1.5 million than just the 1.5 million. You'll get the expected rate of return on 1.5 million long into the future. So it will decrease the liability by far greater than 1.5 million. And at the April Pension Advisory Board meeting, we'll have a chart on what the expectations would be.
And in layman's terms, it's like an insurance premium, that the township is always paid as we went. And that's just simply not sustainable.
Correct.
Anymore.
Right.
And that's why we're creating this.
It's been a long time coming, because it's going to start draining.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
It's really going to be detrimental to the finances of the township. And not only that, I mean, excuse me, Steve, it'll help our bond rating. I remember the actuary actually came in and told us this at the last, or two meetings ago, I believe, the January meeting. And yeah, it was very, very, very important that we do this. And then we'll continue to fund it. We're going to seed it with 1.5 million. But every year, we'll have, it'll be a budget line item that we'll put more money into that as we do the pensions and everything else, which will lower that, continue to lower that liability.
The unfunded liability, absolutely. That's exactly it. Yes. And without having any assets to offset that liability, that liability increased by almost $2 million this year.
Right.
So timings, you know.
This is incredibly important.
Oh, absolutely. Yep.
We've needed to do it for a while. And now we're planning for the future. I think it's a really good move.
Yep.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Great.
So you'll be back to report to us again.
Another step for planning for the future of the township in a positive way. Okay. I guess we'll go to appointments now. The Pension Investment Advisory Committee has one vacancy. Do we have a nomination?
We have two resumes that came in for that position.
No, I only saw one.
I'd like to nominate Chris Burdick.
I'll second it.
Chris Burdick?
Mm-hmm.
That's the only one I saw.
We received one back in January from Terry Sparango.
Okay.
I just wanted to make mention of that, because the resume was there. And it looks quite lengthy compared to the one sentence to.
Well, there's a nomination on the table.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm still learning.
Okay. Is there any other nominations? All right, being none, any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, being none.
I have a concern. Mr. Burdick, the one that you're, that's on the table, his past experiences were brought to light in several of the school board meetings in the past few months. I don't think that his character is that which would be suitable for our township moving forward as planning for the future. I just wanted to make that comment, man.
You'll have your spot. Okay, Mr. Burdick serves on the Pension Investment Committee as it stands right now. His term expired, and he put a letter in to re-know it. He's well-qualified for the position. Any other comments from the board? Comments from the public?
Chris has been falsely attacked at school board meetings.
Hold on a second, Pat.
Pat Boyle, 63, 60, I can't even talk. 6310 Centennial Station. Chris has been falsely attacked at school board meetings. He was an employee of a school district that the school board passed a regulation on and changed how things were done at the school district. And he is being blamed because the school district's policies led to a terrible, terrible tragedy that happened. But it wasn't Chris's policy. It wasn't Chris's doing in any way, shape, or form. As the business manager, he was the spokesperson for the school district. And they are trying to label him as he's the one that hurt the girl. And he didn't. He did his job as he was supposed to do, following the school districts, the school boards. They're the ones that do, we call them ordinances. I don't know what they call them at the school board. But they're the ones that set policies and procedures, not the business manager. The business manager's the spokesperson that speaks to the news outlets. And that's what happened to Chris. Chris has been so crushed by what happened while he was an employee there. And he had no control over it whatsoever. So just so you know, he is being falsely charged. Do you understand?
So he's being falsely accused.
Accused, not charged. Accused. Yes, you're correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Pat.
Thanks for that.
All right. Any other comments from the public? So let's call the question.
Roll call.
Sure, we'll do roll call. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
No.
Judy?
Aye.
Janice?
No, thank you.
And the chair votes aye. The motion carries 3-2. Thank you. Okay, so we have one more. I have a letter here from Dr. Bedden from the school district, that they are letting us know that they have appointed Mike Faris as one of the two Centennial School District representatives to serve on the Warmster, Winston, Winston, excuse me, Warmster Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. So he's been appointed, and it's up to us to approve that. So we're going to have them have a motion to put this on the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Tell him, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
That's okay, Janice.
Okay. So let's just call that question right away. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. Okay. Mike, I would be more than happy to, how would this go? I would nominate him to be appointed? Okay.
They're the ones who.
They appointed, and we have to approve it.
So just approve.
So I'll motion to approve Mike Faris as the school district representative on the Parks and Rec.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Any from the public?
Congratulations, Mike.
Let's call a question first.
Good idea.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Congratulations, Mike. Now maybe we can have a quorum there, huh, Karen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike comes to every meeting and volunteers for every event for Parks and Rec. So I'm really glad to see this. Thank you, Mike.
All right. Moving along.
There you have it, Mr. Chairman.
Professionals' reports. I'll start with you, Tom. You're somebody you'd like to introduce to us tonight, or to the township, actually.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm very happy that the board had afforded me the opportunity to find an assistant township manager to join us in our efforts here. And I'm very excited to introduce Lorenzo Quocchi as our new assistant township manager. Lorenzo comes to us with extensive background in township operations. Specifically, he was Public Works Director at Warwick and Lower Salford. And he's also done some work as one of the water and sewer authorities in Montco. He then left to go make some money in the private sector. And, but now he's found his way home. And the stars aligned for us to bring him on board. I'm very excited. And I know that he's going to do a great job. And I know he's going to work very well with the other department heads and with the board and all our boards and commissions. And I want to introduce him to the public and the board, Lorenzo Quocchi.
Say a few words, please.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. I'm very excited to be here. My family's very excited for me to be here, looking forward to it. I've had a very warm welcome from the staff, other department heads. It's been a very busy two or three days, but we're going to get settled in here. And we're just going to attack things as they come. I like to get things on my plate and off my plate as quickly as possible. I like to be very engaging and very accessible. So I'm looking forward to it. So thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
We know that that's a position that we were in dire need of.
Yes.
I'm glad to see we filled it with someone very competent. Thank you, Tom. And proceed, please.
All right. The, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, the Infrastructure Committee had its first meeting earlier, excuse me, in January, that we were able to discuss that we do have the ARPA funds on file right now, or on deposit, I'd say, at 1.7 million. We are anticipating that to be doubled this year. And in addition to the great latitude that the final rules from the Department of Treasury have assigned to that as far as usage goes, the board had talked about the previous meetings, using some of those funds to bring some things into fruition that have been rattling around for a while. The committee recommended, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to do it, we can expand a little bit on the wheelchair ramp project that the board introduced at the previous meeting that we're going, that is now out to bid, along with the road paving program. And there's an opportunity there to put some more funds into that specific, that specific project. Additionally, we talked about looking at, taking a look at the library. Some of the facilities there may need to be upgraded, the concrete out front, the bathrooms. And coming up, hopefully at the next meeting, we'll be able to firm this up. I'm going to be speaking to some of my former colleagues at Bristol Township about this, security cameras for Warmster Community Park to help with the situation that, to make it more secure and cut down on some of the vandalism that the park has been experiencing. There is a lot of opportunity here. And the committee is going to keep meeting once a quarter and coming up with ideas that we could, we could assign to discuss to the board and have the board approve it when appropriate. So it's a very exciting time. Unfortunately, I think, if I just can make a comment, if you indulge me, the infrastructure money, the IIJA, as it's known, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, we don't think, John, Ramey and I took a look at some stuff coming down from the government, won't have the same latitude, won't have that same elbow room. But we do have a great opportunity, and it's been the theme of this meeting, to build, literally to build for the future. So I thank you for that, Mr. Chairman.
If I might?
Sure.
Tom, we did discuss at the infrastructure meeting that this will require budget amendments at some point to fund this.
Right.
The board will have to be taking action on budget amendments.
Right.
To move the money. So the board is involved in.
Yes.
In what?
Yes. It's not just the Infrastructure Committee. We recommend, and then the board.
And then the board will take action with the budget amendments.
That's right. And right now, I think we have one planned, is we're going to double the amount of handicap ramps so we can get, try to get that done as quickly as possible.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Tom.
Well, the county distribution of the at-home COVID test kits has been discussed already. And I just want to add my voice to, thanks to Joe Veltin and Chief Jim Donnelly, and to Karen Whitney for working so well with the county and making sure that the, this project, that's a great benefit to the entire area, was a success. We've got one more day to go. I was hoping to announce a successful conclusion tonight. Obviously, it's been postponed. It was postponed due to today's weather. But it's going to be up and running on Monday. And our own John Ramey, who seems to be able to take on any challenge we give him, went through the line to time it. And he was in and out in 17 minutes. And that seems to be the theme of what people were saying. Took about 15, 20 minutes to get in, get the kits, and get out.
That's amazing.
That's pretty good stuff. And a lot of people from the county, a lot of people from the township were involved in making that a success. And we're very proud of it. And finally, from my report, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I was in contact earlier this week with Jeff Darwak from the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority. And great progress is being made. This is going to be made this year on bringing those homes down, getting them demolished. The first step is removing the asbestos and the other hazardous materials from the homes. The RDA has now advertised that bid. It is active for the asbestos and hazardous material removal. The contractors will be given access to the site later this month. And I think we're going to have, they're scheduled to announce the award of that bid on the 17th of this month. Once that project is done, the RDA can move ahead with the, doing the same process with the bid and the award for the demolition of the houses themselves. So that's a very, very encouraging step, that this is, this is now taking, breaking the inertia. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm thrilled that they're finally coming down. It's been, how long?
It's got to be 11 years.
At least.
At least. At least.
And then once they take the building, the structures down, then there'll be the second phase that I believe is to remove the slabs, the foundations.
At some point, I don't think I want to know, but I'd love to see how much we paid legal fees over the past 12 years.
Well, we are looking into that. We are literally looking into that.
It's got to be staggering, I'm sure.
Can imagine.
Yeah. Well, we're going to look at that.
Because I think we should be reimbursed for that.
I agree.
I know, Karen.
I agree. And I've had that conversation with several congressmen and senators. So that's, hopefully that comes to fruition.
And John is working on that number. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thanks, Tom. I think our solicitors, Mr. Flagler.
Yeah, it's nice to be here. I had a little, had a little meeting with COVID. And so it's nice to be back. I want to welcome Janice and congratulate you on your election. Nice to have you.
Thank you.
I want to remind everyone, you have my report. If you have any questions, I'll answer specifically. And just want to be the first to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day. We've had, you know, we're having such a miserable COVID couple of years, so we should at least celebrate Valentine's Day.
Right.
But not together.
But.
With your Valentine.
Okay. Yes.
Not the neighbors.
Not the neighbors.
I want to make it clear.
He's on a roll tonight, isn't he?
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Scott mentioned about the road program. Just for the residents, I'd like to know the schedule. I think I've been asked by most of the township officials. It was advertised, both the paving program and the curb ramp program were advertised this past Monday, and then tomorrow will be the second advertisement. The bid openings for both paving and concrete curb ramps will be Thursday, February 17th at 2:00. Aaron, it was nice enough to give me an update as of this afternoon. About 25 contractors already looked at the paving program. Not that they picked up anything, but they went and looked. And then about 15 for the concrete work. So that's some pretty good activity already.
That's good.
All right, so, yeah, we should get some good bids.
We could probably see that on our agenda in March then for approval.
Yeah, I would think so. Sooner the better.
Actually, first meeting in March, I was, first meeting in March, I'd be awarding it, and then looking for start work. Some of the concrete ramps, Andrew would like to get started a little early, but paving program will start in May, depending on schedules and coordination of all that. And before anybody asks, right now, Andrew and Aaron, I know, worked very hard on coming up with the curb ramp program. We're about bidding out about 130 curb ramps. And then the Infrastructure Committee, which you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, recommend we can do a little bit more. We'll see how that works. But that'll be part of 2021's ramps and 2022 a combination. Andrew's done a great job of making sure there's minimal mobilization and interference between a concrete contractor and the paving. So I think you guys are in great hands with Andrew. Aaron and I are basically assisting him, and I think we have a great program. So hopefully we get really good bids.
Yes, excellent.
And we'll add more miles and more ramps as we go, if the numbers come in good. One other announcement or change from my engineer's report that was submitted, I did have a conference call with the applicant Toll Brothers and also their professionals regarding the Pine Grove subdivision. That was the back part of the cemetery lot on 1475 West County Line Road. I got feedback from staff. We did several reviews, got input from several board members, and they followed my lead and withdrew that application after I hung up the phone that afternoon. So there'll be, for the residents that live in that area on Delmont, County Line Road, Toll Brothers did not feel comfortable with the amount of waivers they needed, the amount of issues. I mean, again, they thought they had a good plan, but the density was not there. They needed some 15, 20 waivers, and couldn't meet open space, park and rec, some big items that they couldn't, just could not meet, tree clearance. So they followed my recommendation, withdrew that that afternoon. So that'll be off the table. I know they met with, came to Planning Commission, we're going to meet with the residents, but, you know, I'm not sure if we'll hear again from the cemetery, but I think the message was sent to anybody looking at, and there's been other developers that looked at it that just never got that far. But 45 some homes, they're not going to be built there right now.
Okay. Thanks for working through that, Craig, because that was something, I don't think, they weren't comfortable with it. Guess what? We weren't either. You know what I mean? So it just wasn't meant to be. That's all.
Yeah, when I get feedback from the staff and the official, when we talk about it, and even residents, I know, get back to everybody, and then that gets to me, they appreciated me being upfront with them that, hey, it's not something we can support right now. We just can't see, I couldn't see a path to work with them to get there.
Right.
So, you're welcome.
Thanks, Craig.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you. And part of the infrastructure meeting, when we spoke about the handicap ramps and the paving, the paving contractors really don't want the handicap ramps being done on the same roads at the same time because they interfere with one another. So it's more logical to have them drop back behind and follow up. We can probably get more done because no one's in each other's way. And Mark and I worked in the building trades for a long time, and we know what it's like to have somebody mucking up a floor to lay carpet under you, and, you know, sheet metal workers or electricians up in the ceiling above you.
Some kid that just got out of college said, this is...
That's right. This is the schedule. Right. So, okay, thanks, Craig. All right. Township managers' announcements for the upcoming agendas. Do we have a meeting? Next, let's see, today is the 3rd. Do we have a meeting on the 17th, right?
We are, the meeting is scheduled, but we don't have, we don't think we need to have it since all business is being, all current business is being concluded.
Okay, so if there's no objections?
Objection.
No objection.
No objection.
Okay, so we'll cancel the meeting for the 17th, and then we'll have the next one, the first Thursday in March.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Excellent. All right. Second round of public comment. Anyone? All right. I'd like to thank the people that came out tonight. We got a nice park project moving. We got to present Steve with something well deserved. We put Mike on the board. And enjoy the rest of the month, and be safe. And hopefully, we can take these masks off soon.
Amen.
Amen to that.
So that's all I have. Kathy?
I just want to wish everybody out there Happy Valentine's Day, and especially to my handsome husband, Bob.
All right.
That's it. Thank you.
Mark? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I wear my red tie tonight for Valentine's Day. I know she's watching at home. I want to wish my wife and my best friend Happy Valentine's Day, and I look forward to spending it with her.
Excellent, excellent. Judy?
Do people really celebrate Valentine's Day?
Yes.
Homes are married people. That's one of the times you get together, you know.
Everybody have a Happy Valentine's Day, and thank you for paying attention to our township meeting.
Janice?
Happy Valentine's Day to keep with everybody. My husband got me a nice tricycle, so I'm very excited. Can't wait to get that built. But I also wanted to, one way we can show love to our township employees is when we have failed weather, to please get your cars off the street. And if you have basketball poles, that's another thing I noticed. I drove through the town after the guys did their great job on the streets to kind of see where, because, you know, people on Facebook tend to be negative and make negative comments. So I decided to drive where people were talking about, and every single place where they missed was where someone had a car or had a basketball pole still up, so they had to go around them. So, you know, rather than complaining, just move your car or your basketball pole, so our street will look nice and clean, and we'll be looking better than everybody else around us. So if you could please do that, show some love to our township workers that work really hard, and show them your support. Try to be kind and love one another. Thank you.
All right. With that, motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Everyone be safe.